Our pledge. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all. Let's pause for a moment of silence and I would ask you to remember one of our former SROs, Tony Sis Family. On this pause. Thank you. Welcome to our monthly meeting. You can hear me, right? Yes? Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there is time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable in length. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming. All right, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm in.
We have a motion, Ms. Bynum. Is there a second? A second from Mr. Grove. Any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, no? Does our board liaison have a report tonight?
She does not have a report.
Does that report? She did tell me she was intending to go to Williamsburg, right? Did we make a spot for her?
She's here.
Oh, here she is. Are you ready? Come.
Okay. Never mind, she does have a report. I stand corrected.
We were just talking about you. It was all good stuff. Good to see you, Cass.
Good to see you guys too. Do I need this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Talk about that.
You can raise it right up.
Or you can do that?
We'll just take it like that.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I just have a few comments about kind of like what's been happening around the school lately. And I'll try to keep it brief, but there's a lot that's been happening, so we'll see if I can. So our school recently had our first pep rally, just two Fridays ago, I believe, is the date. And that was really exciting for all the students and it was really hyped out and that was great. And this was fantastic for the students and fantastic for the SCA who had an awesome fundraiser where we got to throw eyes in the teachers' faces.
Awesome.
Yeah, that was a smart idea on their part. And then they also had the SCA, the fall sports teams, and anybody who was a seminar representative as part of the SCA got to be, had the opportunity to be part of a flash mob dance that they did, which is pretty entertaining. And then they also had introduced all the fall sports teams and like introduced all of them and gave them some recognition for what they've been doing. And then we also had lots and lots of games for everybody to play. There's a caterpillar game, which it makes sense, but it's also difficult to understand. So there is some confusion. Now, my sister was there and she was like, some people just could not understand how this works. Fun. They said they had a lot of fun with all the different games and it got the entire student body participating, so that was fantastic. And then along with that, over the past few weeks, since last time I spoke to you folks, we had the senior class elections, the meeting with all of the SCA officers plus any of the seminar representatives. And they talked about the pep rally that I just mentioned and we also talked about some homecoming ideas, kind of theme, how to do it, ideas about that. And currently, the seminar representatives are talking to their classes about the pride days for that week and what ones we want to do, if we want to do like taffy tourist or country club versus country and those kind of days. So they're trying to figure out what we're doing for spirit days. And then last week, our students also got the opportunity to be part of pride clubs and to pick out their top three in a survey and then they're going to be placing them over this week, I believe, is what's happening. But it was really fantastic because pride clubs in the past have been this amazing idea and they have had some adjusting over the years, which is great because we're progressively getting better at doing them. But we have never had such an array of choices than we have had this year. And there was, there were so many, there was like two or three pages of pride clubs to pick from and they only had small descriptions, so there's a lot. And I was looking through these at home and I was just like, wow! But usually we have like a card game and we have like a miscellaneous and we have a coloring page one, which has a lot of people on it, by the way. They enjoy that. But this year, we also had Model UN as an option and there's a skating club and there's all these different options that we've never had before. And so everybody is like super excited about that. And it's a lot of things that students are really interested in doing. So we had that happen and then I believe, as I've been told, that there is a pep rally happening Friday hypothetically. Yes? For the pride? Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure I was right. That's what I hate. But that's going to be for the pride kickoff, so everybody gets to know like which one they're actually in, which is very exciting. So I'm like, especially the seniors who haven't been able to see all these options before and we're just like, yay! So we have that going. And then there are also a few fundraisers that have been happening. So like last Saturday, the seniors had their car washing fundraiser and there's some other fundraisers happening with like shepherd's pie and the donut fundraiser happened for the seniors as well recently. And so all of those fundraisers have been going and I've heard that they've all been very successful, more successful than we like thought they were going to be, which is great. And then Powder Puff is also being planned and homecoming is in the works. So that's pretty much what's been happening with the student body. And then previously, we had talked about the mask and coming up with ideas for the winter and everything on that. And so currently, I'm working on a survey with Principal Seward and see if we can get that out, if it will work or not, and see if we can get any feedback from the students on what their ideas might be. So that's still in the works. That is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Oh.
Yes.
I just reminded, we did do this this morning. I should have remembered this. We are doing the library remodeling committee and so we have five students, I believe, on that right now. And so that's also in the works.
Good. Any questions? Thank you so much. All right, moving on to donations.
Yes, I have several to report. The guardians of Raffiganic donated pocket constitutions to the civics and government classes. Camp James donated $100 to the class of 2023. ZOTUS donated $264 to the FFA. And the following donations are to the baseball program in memory of James Alther. Fay Atkins and Pamela Woodard donated $200. Richard and Connie Phelps donated $50. George and Paula Beer, $50. Taylor and Judith Boer, $50. Don and Linda Deal, $50. Georgia Remine, $150. Donald and Louise Meek, $30. Puppet Performers Cooperative, $500. And Melvin and Lynetta Atkins, $100.
All right, thank you very much. We will, we'll accept those donations with a letter of thanks during the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from our September 14th meeting?
A motion.
Motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, no? It's a order, Mr. Grove, have you had opportunity to review the bills?
I have and always have been well, in good shape.
Good. In case you're wondering, every month, Mr. Grove as a vice chair is reviewing the bills for that month. And he's able to take a look at, you know, all the peas and carrots and the various things that come in and see, you know, how we're burning against the plan. So it's a good, a good thing to be, to monitor. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, no? It's a order. The next thing on the agenda is Dr. Gimsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce Kathy Zer Rhodes, our school psychologist, to present this report. October's bullying prevention month and there are so many great activities planned, but I will let Kathy come to the podium to explain those to you as I bring up her presentation. It feels like it's been a long time. In fact, it's been two years because of our pandemic. I wasn't here last time. All right, so I'm looking forward to this opportunity to share what we're doing in October, this month, for bullying prevention. So you see up there some of the upcoming events. I want to highlight Unity Day, which is Wednesday, October 20th, where we all wear orange to show that we are together against bullying and united for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. The next slide shows our Spirit Week, which is coming up. And I asked the students in, I think, Ms. McCabe's classroom to give some input and these are some of the days that they chose. So we have Pyjama Day, put bullying to sleep. Crazy Socks Day, knock the socks off of bullying. And Wednesday, here's our Unity Day, which will be coming up next week. Wear orange to show that we are one big rap family. Twin Day, be a friend. And Be a Team Player Day, wear a team jersey or Panther spirit wear. Another thing we're doing this year is a poster contest at both schools. So I want to thank Amy Grady and Joy Richardson, our art teachers, because they're taking the lead on this. And you can't see this that well, but I wanted to share a poster that was submitted at the elementary school so far and I thought it was very meaningful. So I'm going to read the words in each of those quadrants of that poster. So the next slide will show one of those. So this one says, "Stop bullying. Sometimes people do it because they lost someone they loved. Ask them to talk or ask what's wrong. If you're a bully, think of the people you hurt. What if you were them? Maybe if someone said those words to you, maybe they wouldn't hurt you, but some people are more sensitive than you." By the way, this was a fifth grader. The next one, bullying is kind of like a virus. It just spreads and spreads, but we can cure that virus by turning a bully into a buddy. And the last one, if you see someone bullying or getting bullied, find an adult or your teacher quickly. And you can see the teacher has her hand on her hip, so she's ready to, ready to hear what has to be, what's going to be said. So I was excited when I saw that. So we also provide teachers with resources to use with their students. So each year, I've been adding more short videos to my collection. So I give links and descriptions to the elementary school and the high school of videos on themes of bully prevention appropriate for pre-K through primary, elementary, middle school, and high school. We also, at the elementary school, will be reading aloud on the announcements, Spookly the Square Pumpkin. And then also suggestions are provided to teachers if they so choose to offer their children coloring pages, activity pages, folded paper crafts, and comic strips on bullying prevention themes. And I collected a lot of books at the elementary school for teachers to sign out to read to their students. And then this year, we're going to give each student a special bookmark. And so the ones on the left are for the elementary school students and the one on the right is for the high school students. So they'll be given out the last week of the month. And I was pleased to see that Cassia talked about the pride days and she seemed, pride clubs, and she seemed pretty excited about that. So lastly, I do want to talk a little bit more about that. So I don't know if you all remember, but pride actually stands for positive relationships, inspire, a drive for excellence. Educational research has consistently demonstrated that a positive school climate is associated with academic achievement, effective risk prevention efforts, and positive youth development. So the goal with the pride clubs is for every student at the high school to belong to a positive group or club, strengthen relationships among peers and adults, and create a school climate that is safe and conducive to learning. And I'll add that, you know, we, we received a lot of training on trauma, trauma-informed practices, and one of the key concepts is to provide a sense of belonging. And I think the pride club certainly does that. So I just pulled out, as Cassia mentioned, there's, the list is so long in terms of choices, so I just pulled out some of them to put on the screen. So some of these made me wish I was in high school. Well, not really, but a little bit. Learning how to drive a, to pilot a drone responsibly, American Sign Language, fishing, foraging for wild foods, and all that sounds pretty out there. I like that idea. Model United Nations. And then the Secret Paos Society is a club that wants to spread kindness throughout the school by putting up, putting up sticky notes, words of affirmation, complimenting others, those types of things. So we have lots of choices.
So will all of the clubs be running? I'm, I'm just curious. I'm sorry, I'm over here, you can't.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just wondering, like, with a lot of clubs, like, would you have a cutoff number? I mean, I hope they all run, like, but you need, do you think that you'll run everyone? Is that, that's?
You know, the variety is great because that means the groups are smaller.
Yeah.
And there's more sense of cohesion with those small groups. So I have a printed copy of all those, so I assume that, that they'll be, be filled, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Who signs up for what.
Yeah, no.
So as always, thank you for your support of our bullying prevention efforts. And I do have our orange ribbons to pass out to you. This time, I have some lapel ones or some bows, you can choose.
I got my ribbons from last year.
Thank you.
All right, any questions? Thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
I'm, I am pleased to see Model UN, that's a new one this year. I said, I'm pleased to see Model UN up there because that's a new one this year.
All right, yes, very excited for Bullying Prevention Month and as you can see, our kids really get involved in our, they have such a spirit of kindness among their peer groups too, so it's great to bring that out and showcase that. 4.2 is the report from our principals, so I'm going to ask our distinguished building leaders to come to the podium, Mrs. Lisa Gates and Mr. Carlos Seward. And they're going to present to you what is our continuous school improvement plans. In the state of Virginia, every school has to have a continuous school improvement plan based on a comprehensive needs assessment they conduct with their instructional teams at each school. And there's certain criteria that you have to, there's a form from DOE that we have to use and fill in. So this is that improvement plan. Whenever you're ready, Mrs. Gates.
Okay, good evening. So I'm going to start off by going over the elementary school's improvement plan. So we have an overarching goal and then we build off of that goal. So our overarching goal is RCES will provide an environment that meets student and staff social and emotional needs while enhancing the academic growth of all students in math and reading to ensure academic achievement gaps are closed. So that is our overall, overall goal. And then we broke it down into three different subject areas or categories. So we have language arts, mathematics, and then the social emotional part. So our language arts goal is all RCES students will increase their instructional reading level by year's growth by May 20, May 2022. Our math goal is all RCES students will increase their number sense and fact fluency level by year's growth by May 2022. And our social and emotional goal is all RCES students and staff will be provided strategies and tools to support their social and emotional well-being during the 2122 school year. So what we've done is I've taken each goal and I have broke it down into how we're going to meet that goal and some more expectations for the subgroups. So for the language arts goal, 75% of our preschool through third grade students will meet the PALS spring benchmark assessment by May 2022. The beginning of the school year, our averages were very low, it was probably about 40%. There's a lot of gaps in literacy. And then 75% of all fourth through seventh grade students will meet the end-of-the-year developmental reading assessment benchmark. That's going to determine their reading level. And then 80% of all third through seventh grade students will increase their fall reading growth assessment score by May 2022. That's kind of like the mock SOL that they took this fall. So we want to see 80% of them increase their score. Now, I hate to give averages, so I just want you to know that when I say 75%, you know, the remaining students, we want to see them make a year's growth. If they might, if they don't meet benchmark, that's a number, we still want them to make a year's growth from where they are because our goal is to meet every student where they are. So for each of those subgroups, we have action steps. So for the preschool students through third grade, we are going to provide daily guided reading groups focusing on letter ID and sounds. We're also going to focus on oral reading and word recognition. Something new we're doing this year is our, all of our grade levels are having monthly reading network meetings with our reading specialists where they look at data and they come together and decide what we need to do to drive instruction each month. We are also doing running records. Those determine reading levels within each student. And every nine weeks, they have two student, or staff will put the reading level of the student on a Google Doc that I developed so I can monitor that growth and that progress. We're also doing the PALS quick checks, which come along with the PALS assessment. And the reading specialist, we go over with her what we want her to do in her math network meetings, the assistant principal and I, who is a reading specialist as well. And we sit down together and make that agenda so we can make sure we're all on the same page. So our fourth through seventh grade students, our action steps are DRA, develop, the reading assessment, we're going to do it three times yearly to check their reading goal, I'm sorry, their reading level. We're going to progress monitor all of our identified students and we're of course going to differentiate reading instruction. I'm also going to monitor their reading growth on the Google Doc with running records. And then we're going to continue daily interventions and fluency checks along with data collection and the reading network meetings with the reading specialist. Our third through seventh grade students, for the fall reading growth assessment score, our action steps will be to analyze our student growth assessment data from the fall, of course, to see where we need to go. We are going to put into place formative and summative assessments. We have, we have purchased AIMS, which is a diagnostic tool for reading that can, it's more for comprehension and we also are looking at it to do that for math as well. And we're going to make sure that all Title I students have access to that. We're also going to start some after-school remediation in the spring. And the leadership team is going to monitor lesson plans, do classroom observations, of course, benchmarks, SGAs, SOL predictors, and we're going to make sure teachers are targeting instruction based on student needs. So that is our language arts goal. So for math, our three subcategories are 75% of our preschool and kindergarten students will meet the VKRP benchmark assessment by May 2022. The VKRP is an assessment that, it's, it's fairly new. It's given to kindergarten and now preschool students to see where they are in math when they first come to school. And it's really good data. We can kind of see what they know and what we need to teach them. So it was a very low this fall as well, it was probably in the 40% range. So 75, our goal is for 75% of those students to meet the benchmark. And then our third through seventh grade students, 80% will increase their fall math growth assessment. And then all RCES students will be provided daily number sense and fact fluency instruction to increase their conceptual understanding and problem-solving skills. When we dug into the math data, we realized that numerous students struggled with number sense and fact fluency, so that's why we're really honing in on that. So for our preschool students, to make sure that they meet that VKRP benchmark, we are going to practice daily number sense with manipulatives in classrooms, flashcards, subitizing skills. I don't know if you know what that is, but that's when you flash up a number and students can identify it quickly. We're also going to do number sense practice with manipulatives, number recognition practices, skip counting, and additional subitizing skills when needed. And there will be daily observations, formative assessments, and the spring, in the spring, we will give the VKRP again to see how the students have progressed in kindergarten and preschool. They just added preschool this year. For our third through seventh graders, to increase their math growth assessment, we are going to analyze, of course, the fall data and we're going to make sure there are meaningful formative and summative assessments. We're going to utilize the AIMS diagnostic and of course have after-school remediation for that in the spring. We're going to have lesson plan, I'm going to observe lesson plans, classroom observations, benchmarks, SGAs, and SOL predictors, and focus on lesson plans to make sure all SOLs are being covered. And then for our number sense, which is for all RCES students, one way that we're going to make sure that this is happening is we're going to have our exploratory teachers incorporate number sense and fact fluency within their lessons. For example, the music teacher will utilize numbers in her lessons with her kiddos. Our AVL instructor, they do a lot of skip counting, so that's going to be that they incorporate that in their lessons at least weekly, but most of them do that daily. I want students to participate in calendar lessons daily to reinforce number sense and fact fluency and math teachers will incorporate math warmups into daily lessons. And of course, the evidence would be lesson plans and observations. And last but not least, our social and emotional goal. All RCES students and staff will be provided those strategies and tools to support their social and emotional health during the 2122 school year. 100% of RCES students will, will participate in daily morning meetings. And I don't know if you know what a daily, a morning meeting is, but basically it's when students come together in the morning and they just have a discussion or they might talk about their weekend, if it's a Monday, or they might just say hello to each other. It's just a really easy, simple way to get to know everybody and just to get the day started positively. So every class is doing that and it's also incorporated into our master schedule. 100% of RCES students will be provided a quiet area in their classroom environment that can be utilized for self-regulation. So all of our classrooms, including exploratory, have a quiet corner. So when students are feeling overwhelmed or upset or whatever they need, they can go to that area and they can sit and calm down or whatever they need it for. The teachers model, it depends on the grade level and how to utilize that. Sometimes even the teachers like to sit there. And then 100% of RCES staff will be provided support and resources to meet their social and emotional well-being. So we are going to have the students participate, like I said, in the morning meetings. They're about 15 to 20 minutes long and they're different depending on the grade level. We're going to incorporate the second step, SEL curriculum, which Kathy Zer Rhodes has helped us a lot with. And then teachers are also going to participate in professional development quarterly pertaining to additional information that can be utilized during their morning meetings. And Carly Moore, our behavior specialist, does a lot of those for us. And the evidence will be observations, lesson plans, of course, professional development, and follow-up meetings with the behavior specialist. So the quiet corner, like I'd mentioned before, teachers will construct a calm-down area in their classroom. It's really cool to go in classrooms to see the different ones. Some are super extravagant with like stuffed animals and pillows and chairs and lights and things. Some are just a chair with like a couple of sensory, you know, balls or something. It just depends on the teacher. We have a couple of pictures of those that I'll have to send to Dr. Gimsley to share because some of them are very unique. And then the observation of teachers modeling the calm-down area. I told teachers it's very important that they model how to use that area so students use it correctly and they have done a very good job at that. And then how are we going to support our staff to meet their social and emotional And then how are we going to support our staff to meet their social and emotional needs? Staff support groups, um, Kathy Sickler is, is doing, um, the staff support groups on a monthly basis. Um, daily staff check-ins, um, Ms. Whizzinger and myself, we go around every single morning and tell every single classroom, "Good morning," and wave and say, "How are you?" Um, sometimes, you know, if a teacher's already gone and started teaching, we don't interrupt, we'll just like wave through the window, but we do it every single morning and if something happens and we don't get there, the kids will let us know, they're like, "Why didn't you come in and say hi?" But we try to do that every morning and that just lets us check in with those, those students and those teachers to make sure they're doing okay. We're going to permit to be fit activities for self-care, um, I participate in those and I try to make that known to my staff so they'll join me. And then, um, morning and afternoon check-ins with staff, um, I check in with my staff in the afternoons as well, I try to go around in the evenings after students have left just to see how their day has went because, um, I feel like after their day, they're going to be more apt to talk to you about how things went. So, um, and then of course, schedules and participation and observations will be part of that evidence. I have lots of people that are going to help me, um, with the implementation of our school improvement plan, myself, uh, Ms. Whizzinger, assistant principal, Carly Moore, the behavior specialist, all of our teachers, preschool through seventh grade, all of our exploratory teachers, Kathy Sickler, and our commit-to-be-fit team. And then for monitoring, to make sure everything goes smoothly, um, of course, myself, um, Jennifer Whizzinger, our assistant principal, Bethany Bostick, our math specialist, Catherine Todd, our reading specialist, Carly Moore, our behavior specialist, Kathy Zerodes, our school psychologist, and then Amy Wayland and Jennifer Deal, our tech representatives, will make sure that, um, we are checking in and that all staff are doing well. So, thank you. Did you have any questions? There might, that was a lot of information.
Can you tell me, I'm just curious about the quiet corner a little bit more, is it, um, do, do people like have a signal for when they want to go there, how does it work?
It just depends on the grade level. So, um, I experienced, I went in and did an observation in a kindergarten classroom and I saw a little guy get up and he went over and he sat down and she had a couple like bins of blocks and he just, and she wasn't teaching, she, she, they were doing an independent activity and he just started building, so just went over and I was like, "Hey, what are you doing?" He said, uh, he said, "I just have some, some sad things on my mind and this makes me happy." And he knew to go over and I said, "Well, how did you know?" And he said, um, that the teacher had told, you know, had shown them, had modeled, you know, which is going to look different in our middle school classrooms, I haven't experienced that yet, but, um, I was really pleased with how a kindergartner was able to adapt to that. Now, I have had some students who abuse the quiet corner, we actually had one today that liked to go in there about every five minutes, so him and I had to have a little discussion about, you know, "I want you to use the quiet corner, but you need to be with your teacher when she's teaching," you know, that's very important. He liked to go over and hang out when he was supposed to be learning a specific lesson. Um, so we had to have a little talk, but it does take some time, but, you know, it, when students get overwhelmed, I feel like it's a great place for them to go to. Um, Carly Moore has helped each teacher that has asked, um, to get those, you know, areas ready and, and I'm really, um, I've been really pleased.
It's a neat idea.
Yeah. Any other question?
Good, thank you very much.
Turn it over, uh-huh. All right. Mr. Stewart, share the wonderful things happening at the high school.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I would like to first start off by thanking my colleague, Principal Gates, at the elementary school, writing my first comprehensive plan, school improvement plan was a task and Lisa was available to me, uh, as the vet in the house, uh, so Lisa, thank you so much for helping me through this process and this presentation. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, members of cabinet, tonight I present to you our comprehensive school improvement plan for the school year. Our overarching goal is to provide an environment that meets the student and staff's social and emotional needs while enhancing the academic growth of all of our students in four core areas. Uh, one of the things that Lisa and I talk about, we actually talk every Friday on purpose just to kind of check in with each other. And, um, we've decided to make sure that that alignment, that overarching goal is vertical in its integration so that it's seamless when students move from grade seven to grade eight. At the high school level is a little different, there are four cognates that the Virginia Department of Education and our division superintendent likes for us to look at. Let's go through them together. So it's two strands, the first strand is teaching and learning. So in our English Language Arts, we want our students to have an achievement goal in reading and in writing, uh, the, the last term, the last school year, the recorded number was seven to nine percent, we want to go to eighty-five percent. The number eighty-five percent did not come out of the sky. During the last full school year, pre-COVID, our school, high school was averaging the mid-eighties. So there were some years where we were above that, some years where we were a little below that. And so we want to kind of get back to basics, we want to get back to where we, where we used to be. In mathematics, we want our student achievement to go from fifty-one percent to eighty-five percent. That's quite a statistical variance for my doctoral people in the house. There's a reason why we decided on that number, my mathematics chair, our leadership team, we got together, we factored in that students were not fully engaged during the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, and we wanted to make sure that our goal was representative of the students that we have and the work that we're doing now and not the anomaly of last school year. In science, we were at sixty-one percent, we're going back to the eighties, back to the eighties.
Yeah, I like that.
Where's the DeLorean at? And in so, history, social sciences, we're going from sixty-seven percent to eighty-five percent. Dr. Grimsley shared this with you, with his board at a meeting last school year, I'll just reiterate it quickly, that the state has required that students for a standard diploma really only need one social studies. So the sixty-seven percent number is actually from the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year where that was last the standard. And I spoke to Mr. Stockdale, one of our outstanding teachers, he said we're going to blow right past that number. And, and like, just like Mrs. Gates, we have, uh, strategies for each one. And so we came up for the teaching and learning strand, we want to develop, implement, and monitor a process to ensure lesson planning is aligned to the standards of learning and content and cognition, what's written down on paper and what our students are able to achieve. So we have already my assistant to the principal, Mrs. Samborn, our leadership team, we've developed a process for reviewing lesson plans, providing feedback, does a really good high-fac size to teachers to help them with that. There are some teachers that are doing amazing with that, there's some teachers that need a little bit of coaching with that, and that's what we're doing. And that leads to the professional development and our lesson plan alignment and the implementation of aligned lesson plans in class. It's, it's one thing to have a plan, it's another thing to implement it, so we want to make sure that our teachers are doing that with fidelity. Under teaching and learning, our next strategy is to make sure that we monitor quality control and have targeted feedback on instruction via weekly walkthroughs and observations. Uh, we do that through professional development, the state has, uh, provided some new criteria for teachers, the assistant principal of the elementary school, Ms. Whizzinger, uh, did a presentation during our summer retreat, uh, about that eighth standard that is included for teachers, we're going to double down on that so that teachers understand what we're looking for as administrators. We're doing walkthroughs, uh, that's a two, three to five minute walkthrough of the class, providing feedback, and our system talent ed, thank you for sponsoring that software package for us. The pre-observation meeting, so the teachers will meet with Mrs. Samborn and I and tell us, "Hey, what are you doing this day?" We'll go in and do the observation and then we'll have a post-meeting. Uh, feedback is always good. And so we believe here at the high school, as they do at the elementary school, that those conversations about instruction will lead to, uh, to really good outcomes for kids. A rising tide lifts all ships. And one of the things that we're doing, I spoke with our assistant superintendent about this about three or four weeks ago, making sure that our special education teachers and the content teachers, that they're collaborating in their lesson plans and lesson designs to meet the needs of students with IEPs or individualized education plans and the needs of their, uh, general education students. And so Dr. Johnson and myself have been talking about developing, looking at some models of co-teaching, Maryland Frenchy's big in that area and identifying what models work best for what classes and what teachers and what strategies, I'm really excited about that work to come. The third strategy for teaching and learning is the review of assessment data. So we're going to review assessment data, the quantitative, the scores, and the qualitative. What are teachers seeing, what are they noticing that the test scores do not necessarily reveal? And that's happening at departmental meetings, creating assessments, uh, for those of you that are familiar with education, the great professor, Finnwick English from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, he believes in the written, the taught, and the learned curriculum, just making sure that all of those things are aligned. Uh, that's really important. And providing professional development, uh, Lisa and I talked about this a few weeks ago, we want to train our teachers to be data-wise, how to look deep into that data and to find out how students are succeeding and more importantly, what areas do we need to focus on so that we can get to the levels that we want to get to. The second strand this evening that I like to present on behalf of the high school deals with the school environment and again, there are four cognates there as well. So the administration, we are curating a system of processes and some standard operating procedures, uh, and practices for staff. So as we enter this school year and future school years, we want to reimagine the learning environment, I spoke with you guys about that back in May of two thousand twenty-one, we want to reimagine what that experience looks like for the students, but also what it looks like for the teachers, take a little pressure off of them, but establish some baselines where they can access the resources that they need to. The second cognate is a commitment to professional development, my administration will provide campus-level professional development complimentary to that that's offered by the division level for faculty in the areas of instruction, operations, student management, uh, that's a word for discipline, uh, and of course, safety and security. As a matter of fact, we are going to have a faculty meeting in this very room tomorrow and we're going to have our tabletop activities. And that's an opportunity for me to present a security scenario to our teachers, uh, so if we have an intruder on campus, what do you do? The teachers get to talk to each other about what they do and the ones that have, uh, the right answers or the answers that would fit the situation, uh, will be, get a hand clap and those that don't will get educated by their colleagues on that. The third cognate is of course, safety and security, and I kind of went through that just a moment ago, but through our professional development, uh, Mr. Tupper, our executive director for, uh, student services is the leader of that, developing our comprehensive crisis and safety plan, we're abiding by that. The second part actually is for the kids, a, a safe and orderly school environment means that students are doing the right thing. And so as Mrs. Gates, our elementary's principal, said, you're, you almost have to train the students into how to do the right thing and putting the supports in place for them to do that. So we're going to provide that through a number of ways that I'll talk about in just a moment. And the fourth cognate is our family and community engagement and I'm no stranger to people, I like engaging with people, so we want to continue to do that so that our families understand that we're partners, we want to do that with our business partners, we want to do that with members of the community so that we can tap their resources and they can see and know that we're here to serve their students in the very best way possible. So the strategies, as was noted earlier today, we've established a pride day once a month to create an inclusive culture for our students. We're going to reinforce student attendance by establishing protocols to identify students who have attendance issues and keep that chronic absenteeism rate under ten percent. For those of you not familiar with the term chronic absenteeism, that's when a student misses ten percent or more of the school year, the state likes for that number to be below fifteen percent. This year, we're going to be below ten percent. Last year, we were actually at five percent, uh, but now that we're in an environment that's, that mimics more real life, I think the ten percent number is, I think we're going to make it to. And I think, I have one more slide there, we're going to provide, I'm sorry, can we go back one more? I apologize. Provide training and support for our staff on restorative practices so our teachers understand how administrators are working with young people and why the, uh, the corrective action or the consequences, if we want to use that word, why they look the way that they look. Actually, Mrs. Samborn, my assistant to the principal and I, had our building leadership team meeting today and one of the teachers said, "You know what, I feel like you guys are handling and dealing with kids, you guys are taking kids out, looking directly, you're having those conversations with kids." I got to say, that kind of even feel a little good about that. Next slide. Again, the, this next one is to establish strong channels of communication that promote and maintain, uh, operational efficacy. Well, again, we have weekly administrative team meetings, uh, that's my professional school counselor, my assistant to the principal, my nurse and athletic director, and my bookkeeper. Then we have our bi-weekly building leadership teams, monthly departmental meetings, monthly faculty and staff meetings, I meet with my department chairs, one-on-one in my office just in case they needed to kind of deep, deep into some more issues. This Friday, we're actually having our pride kickoff, but we're also having the very first meeting of the principal student advisory council or committee, these are a group of students that don't hold leadership positions in other organizations that have access to me and share what they, feels on their heart. And I've established a weekly communication called Mr. Stewart Speaks that will share, uh, that will share information with faculty and staff. I've worked on making them as brief as possible, I've worked on it. And the last one, establish strong connections with family and community members to improve all aspects of the school. One of the things that I require of my teachers, because communication is important, teachers regularly communicate with parents of students who have a D grade or below, I don't want any surprises. I don't want a parent coming to me on graduation night saying or day, "Hey, is it, is Johnny graduated?" No, because he, uh, uh, no, 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 no. So we want our teachers to communicate with parents and be proactive so that we can have as many students participating, passing, and taking care of their academic business. We're going to analyze new methods to reach out to the communities right now, there's a book by Dr. Steve Constantino, he is the executive chancellor professor at William and Mary, I'm reading one of his books on family engagement right now so I can strengthen my chops in that. And again, establish connections with members of the apprehended community to forge appropriate partnerships and alliances, all for one thing, Lisa and I, we lead our buildings for one reason, we want student experiences to be the very best possible, not the best in the county, not the best in the Commonwealth, the very best possible, period. And Lisa and I are available for any questions, comments, observations, and yes, even some criticisms.
Any, any comments, any questions?
Pretty impressive.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great amount of thought that's been put into it, appreciate it.
I just had one question, I'm sorry to have a question, but, um, I know that last year, I remember Ms. Gainer talked about students being, like high-grade students being concerned when they get to a C or below, like are you going to, the D or below seems pretty low, I mean, I'm curious about that, that, um, just, just that communication in terms of, I think everybody gets interim report correct. Okay, so the D or, I'm just, I mean, I just wondered, this, this last bullet point on this page, like what, what is that?
Yes, ma'am. The students do receive interim reports, uh, this is my fifth school division, is the only one where the interim reports come out every three weeks, that's pretty frequent.
Yeah, yeah, so that's not going to change to be.
That's not going to change, okay, okay. But what, but what can happen is even though three weeks is pretty frequent, it's very frequent.
Yeah.
A D grade can pop up in between there and again, that's another opportunity for the teachers to do two things, one, notify the parents about the grade where parents don't have to wholly rely on power school, and it's an opportunity for the teacher to create that relationship with the family and with the student.
Directly, yeah, rather than a sheet of paper, but a direct communication, I understand that, thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you all for your work, well done.
We're an incredible team, very happy to have them on board. Okay, four point three is that annual SIPA policy review where we have to publicly read it, so I'm going to put it up on the screen here so you can review the acceptable computer use system, um, acceptable computer system use policy. I don't think there were, um, any changes to it this year over the last year.
Don't do anything illegal.
So we, we've all had opportunity to review this thing, right? So there, I remember one year where we actually read the whole thing and it was painful, we read it out loud.
Yeah, no, don't do that.
Let's not.
That's why we're just going to publicly review it, you've seen it, it's on board docs for anybody who would like to see it. Okay.
Thanks.
All right. And then four point four is our monthly well-check. So I'll pull this up. All right, so, uh, this is where our dashboard was, October fourth, we're getting really excited, in fact, there was one right after this too where it was zero at the high school, zero active cases, zero staff cases, zero quarantines, we were so excited, we're getting calls up and right from divisions everywhere. Um, but today, we see how quickly it can change, okay? Um, it, it can. Um, it, it can fluctuate a lot as, as long as our region and our community is in high transmission. It does not take very long at all for some of these things to cascade into this kind of a situation. Um, now, we have um, had different events since we started this year. We've had pep rallies, we've had games, we've had SCA elections, assemblies, all sorts of those things. Um, so I know this seemed pretty coincidental to connect to the pep rally. And in fact, myself, I was even surprised how little cases were actually connected to that particular event. Um, there was one that was definitive, just one. Um, but we had found out about quite a lot of other activities that were happening that very same weekend with large groups of friends. And you know, meeting at each other's houses and parties and a lot of things like that. There were homecoming dances at other um, counties that some of our students went to. So there was a lot going on. Um, so that being said, those are things we cannot control. Uh, but it all made us pause for a second and just say, wow, okay, that could have been a lot worse in connecting to that kind of an, an event. So more careful planning on those types of gatherings. You heard from our student liaison how important that is for their social emotional connectedness and um, part of the high school experience, but we need, you know, we need high school students to help us make smart decisions in and outside of school. We need them to wear their mask properly. And we're finding more and more during some of the student interviews when they're reported not wearing their mask properly. Then that three-foot rule goes to six feet and they, now you have double the diameter, okay? So you put out a lot more kids in quarantine that way. Uh, so we just need some help with that too. Um, so our numbers came up a bit, but we are, after speaking with the NCIS team, um, they worked really, really hard all last week and through the weekend, traced down every last uh, case. Um, it looks like those numbers are steady, steadily falling back off and we expect those to come right back down. Um, as a state, the past ninety days, you can see cases are trending down. So that's um, great to see. And this is the entire pandemic period. And this is all data you can pull up as well on the BDH webpage. Um, and as you can see onto the right, that spike in cases that we saw um, is not as high as last year's big spike in the state. This is Rappahannock locality data the past ninety days. So we were coming down pretty steadily in just this recent couple of weeks, seeing them coming back up a little bit. And then the entire pandemic for Rappahannock is here. Um, we were really excited to get this uh, community transmission data chart from our mitigation specialist at RapRap HD who um, Daisy Banta, she's wonderful. She works very closely with us on just about every case or scenario. Um, and she sends us a weekly chart and Rappahannock is doing, was doing really well. This was ten-six. We expect that to come back up um, based on the chart they just posted. We're back in the high range again. But with a small county, that fluctuates very easily with just a few cases as well. Um, around us, uh, here's a comparison chart. So uh, pretty similar situations in any school district. We saw, um, if you're watching the news too, you can see the struggles different schools are having. Uh, so we've established a COVID roundtable team debrief, um, which is just a weekly, um, bi-weekly rather, get together of the NCIS team and certain administrators to just enhance communication and really debrief each scenario. What's happened with this? How can we improve our systems? Uh, so just recently, especially after this last uptick, we got back together. So we definitely need to strengthen communication between NCIS and administration. Uh, we all have our different lenses that we look through. Um, and if you don't, if you're not sensitive to the other lens in that role, i- it's really difficult to build that appreciation for what each is doing. Um, and they're both equally important lenses, but they just need to come in focus. Uh, new enforcement strategies and incentives for proper mask wearing. Um, we are working on enhanced athletic protocols for practice and travel and really just tightening up some of that, uh, those protocols. Um, and when we're traveling and how we establish seating in case contact tracing needs to occur. And luckily, we do have cameras, so that's made it really easy, but it also lets us get to see what's really going on sometimes. Okay, we need to have a talk. Um, so that's, that's been helpful. Uh, general exposure, we want to cast a little bit of a wider net. Um, like so, uh, we were talking about sending a general exposure letter to a class, let's say. Just because kids do get up and walk around and move and you cannot just, you know, assume that for ninety minutes, those kids are seated in one location in the classroom, just as a general to say, you know, this, um, there's a case in this classroom for the next fourteen days or so, please monitor for any symptoms and should they develop, please contact our COVID response team. And just to cast a little bit of a wider net to be sure we're not missing anybody. And also enhance transparency and communication. Um, we're making some field trip modifications, the way we travel again, seating charts, buses, what's essential, what's not, mixing of cohorts, certain things like that. Added layers of accountability um, for the administration, for NCIS, for teachers, for students. This is, it takes everybody to do this right and we just need everybody on the same page, helping one another out. Um, we are moving just about all um, congregating activities like the pride kickoff, pep rallies, um, homecoming events outdoors. So that's going to go outside.
Good, good decision.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, and the kids actually love it. They're like, oh, awesome, I can wear these. So the kids are in on this conversation too. Um, so we're going to move some things outdoors, um, and get a little more creative with that. Um, but we're also, you know, um, kids have to help us out too. So we can't keep doing these awesome fun things. We all love to do them, but we need their help too, making these smart decisions and being a part of the solution. Um, so um, if we don't get these numbers back down, I'm not sure we're going to be able to do some of these things. So we're just monitoring that and making sure we're communicating and they're um, being a part of that solution. Uh, so it's been very helpful. Our first roundtable happened um, just this morning after I just got home from the beach and we all got together. I was ready.
We're like, let's go to the beach.
It was a great trip to the beach, but uh, it, it, great time for reflection and a good time for the team to go talk as well and work through some, some of these cases. And I even had administrators work with the NCIS team to actually go through that contact tracing and calling and see what it's like. If you haven't done it, it's intense. You know, you're dealing with um, just really sensitive um, situations and very upset parents sometimes and very concerned. Um, it, it's just a whole lot and I'm not sure the NCIS team should bear the brunt of that all the time, you know, so we need to help each other out. Um, and parents have to understand from this side of the table, we're dealing with rules that, you know, we didn't write, we, we didn't write the rules, but we got to play the game. And this is the, the metrics we have to use. So um, and the kids seem on board. They don't want, they don't want to see the dashboard like this. Everybody was so proud of the zeros at the high school, you know, so we want to keep it there. So we're going to do everything we can to get it right back down. Any questions?
As long as we, you know, continue to learn from
Absolutely.
Make a mistake and then we move on and we fix it and we move on from there. I think that's important.
We keep talking. It's a, it's a discourse this whole time and what happened this time, that was different from last time. And we have had all these events and we don't want to limit spectators or change the way we're doing things, but if you're, we just need more compliance with some of these things, just to make sure we're safer and these numbers don't come back up. The last thing we want is Department of Health calling us and saying, okay, everything's canceled, okay? And that's a very public way to do numbers like that. So if we're all part of the same team and work together, we can drive them back down.
We, you know, we have cold weather and basketball coming. So that's, that's another, another challenge, I think people have.
It's a challenge, but we have had a lot of indoor games and events and everything and we haven't seen a spike like that. So we just have to watch it.
Volleyball's been well attended.
Volleyball's been packed all the time. Been to a lot of those games and, yeah.
The times that I've seen it, I, I don't think I saw anybody that was not masked. So that's, that's a good thing.
They're doing pretty well. They're doing pretty well. I think as, when they, you see the zeros and you see these things coming, maybe we get a little more lax and people get more confident. But until um, you know, those community transmission rates come down here and around us, we've just got to be really careful because it can come right back up.
Yeah, I'm, I just, in relation to the previous presentations that we had, you know, I see that like twenty percent of the high school is not in school right now, like is quarantined or with COVID. And I just don't know how we can achieve the goals, which are big, we're looking for big improvements in a lot of areas. I just, I just was, I'm curious, two things. One is, you know, how do we, I mean, I, I know you, I'd like to hear more about how to communicate just what we need the people to do so we can have schools successfully.
So in the, the uh, roundtable team discussion, the principals were great too. So they're doing um, especially at the high school. That's where our focus is right now because, you know, we're, we're dealing with young leaders, young adults. They have access to the vaccine. They can, you know, we have to empower them to make good choices too. Um, so they're going to be talking to all the grade levels and really as a team, the NCIS team with the administration. And really just giving an instructional demonstration like we did with a couple of classes at the elementary when we had some, you know, uh, repeat offenders that we just needed to speak to. Um, and that went over really well when we made them part of the solution and said, okay, here's the diagram. How, here's how you wearing your mask under your nose affects these three around you now. If once these, those interviews come out or we see you on a camera, you know, now your buddies are out. Do you, you know, how many of you like when your parents are talking about distance learning for ten days and, oh my goodness. You know, they don't want to be there either and they want to help be part of the solution, but sometimes to see it, hear it and be part of the strategies. Uh, so they'll be having those grade level discussion meetings and also creating some incentives for proper mask wearing. Um, and then just, we just have to watch that, keeping people accountable too. Um, we can't control what happens outside of here, you know, so you, you do have every right to go to a concert and go to um, you know, parties and get togethers and all of those things. There's no restrictions. So we just have to be mindful of that when that comes back, how we interact too, inside and outside of school.
And, and then in terms of, you know, the students and that, this twenty percent of the school that's not in school, how, I mean, can you describe how distance learning is working and if it's being, if it's, if we've improved in any of the effectiveness of it? Because I know that we had trouble with it last year, especially in the high school.
Yeah. Um, so we maintained our Canvas platform so that all teachers still have all content built into Canvas. So um, it's been known to us that at any time, your remote list and your in-person list can change. Uh, so you have to have ready access to your lessons. We have some teachers who are, who are doing recordings of all lessons and putting them in there for their remote students. Others are interacting just fine through the platform with the students, but we have a generated list that the NCIS team has created with the teachers. So they can always see who, who they expect in their classes to be remote. So they're not negatively impacted and they know who to reach out to and check back in with.
And then I'm really applaud your, the, the additional communication in terms of if there's someone in a classroom letting people know. That's been, I know a source of anxiety for families, just not really knowing, well, I see a big number, but I don't know who.
Yeah.
Or what. So, and I think that that is likely to discourage people or to encourage people to think, oh, if I have a sniffle, maybe it's not allergies, maybe I should check.
Exactly.
And that, and that is, that's going to hopefully bring the numbers down.
We hope so.
Just to let people, give people pause a little bit before sending someone with the sniffle.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Dr. Ripsley.
Yes, sir.
The next thing, I'm sorry?
That concludes my reports.
All right, thanks. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is the Headwaters representative report.
I did get to meet outdoors with Brittany. It was nice to see her as always. And they're busy, 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 busy. So here we are. The first session of the after-school program is going to end this Thursday. It was a great success and there were fifty-six students. And that was in, an increase of forty percent um, for this fall. And twenty percent of the students actually used the bus that Headwaters provided and that provided a job for someone and gave a lot of people access. So that was great. And then tomorrow, I'm going to be with the after-school along with some National Honor Society folks and we're going to be painting on the playground again. We're going to, we're going to put in lines for basketball and we're going to brighten up some other countries and other things. Um, and it's going to be beautiful weather outdoors, another good outdoor activity. Session two is going to start um, November second and their website, headwatersfdn.org is a good place for parents to sign up for this second session of after-school. Starfish now has nine mentor mentee pairs from eight last week. And um, they're going to have a field trip to go bowling on October thirtieth, um, if conditions permit. And then Reed is going to retool for a January start this year. They have a new model um, that they're going to unroll with volunteers paired directly with one classroom teacher who will visit the class weekly and will work with small groups or individuals that the teacher decides. And another reading related activity is they're exploring being part of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program, which distributes books monthly to children in the birth through five population at Rappahannock. Seems like a good way to get more books into kids' hands. And then the writing interns have been selected. Ava Geno and Luke Ellis have started writing. They each will write um, an article for MadRap Reporter and for the Rappahannock News alternating. And that's a good thing. And trunk or treat is back at Rappahannock County Elementary School on October twenty-ninth from five to seven. And I saw that, that the PTO is looking for donations. Um, and I think Catherine has the contact for, if you have some candies sitting around or other things. Educational enrichment grants are available to teachers. I think they've had just maybe one so far, but teachers can apply these mini grants that are rolling basis um, that are, that are around and it's, it's money for doing enrichment for your class. And that application is also on the website for Headwaters. And Headwaters is working with Family Futures and the My Futures Program to, to make five-minute videos on various financial topics for parents. If the first video is going to be released in November and it'll be called Five Minutes with Family Futures. Jenny Capsa is the star of the show. And that is that.
That's a lot.
That's a lot, yeah.
They're a busy group. Yeah. Yeah. Well, thanks for that. That's, that's a lot of information. Thank you. MBGS?
We don't meet until Thursday a week.
Thursday a week. All right. Thank you. Moving on to public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to address the board this evening, if you'd rise and come uh, to the front and uh, give us your name and your district. Anyone?
Hi, I'm Lola Fletcher and I'm from the Piedmont District. I just wanted to say that I've been going and meeting with a lot of the administration and everything and I just, and I really applaud everyone and the job that they have been doing because I can't believe the school system that we have. I mean, it really makes me excited on the fact that we really focus on individualized attention and ensuring that our students get the best care that they possibly can in as safe and of an environment as we can um, achieve at this time. So just want to applaud everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
If there's anyone on Zoom that would like to address. There are some people on Zoom. We have eight participants.
Eight?
Um, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, you could please raise your hand and I'll unmute your mic. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I see none.
Is anybody on Zoom willing to, to at least pipe in long enough to tell us how the, uh, what's the experience? Can anybody tell us uh, what the, what it's like? Anybody?
Hmm. Um, uh, this is Virginia Pace. Um, could you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, yes. Um, um, I just want to say thank you for putting the Zoom in mind up because it really is nice to be able to call in and hear what's happening when we can to actually make it to the meeting. And the only thing I would say is that it, it is a little difficult to um, of course, see what's happening because we can only see the um, uh, the PowerPoint screen or the, the screen of Shannon. So um, but other than that, it is really helpful to, to have this. So I just want to say that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And you can hear, you can hear well? Did she get me wrong?
I'm trying to sort out my mute from my unmute button there. Yeah, the regular Zoom stuff. Yeah, I, I can hear pretty well. Um, Rachel broke up a little bit when she was speaking, but um, everybody else has come through very clearly.
Good, good. Well, thank you for that.
Um, I have a hand up Ellen Adams.
Okay.
Right, Ellen? Go ahead, ma'am.
I can't hear you, Ellen.
I can not hear you, Ellen. You look like you are unmuted. Cannot hear you, Ellen, you look like you are unmuted. All right, we'll see if we can come back to you. We have Kristen. Kristen, I've asked you to unmute. Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I can hear her.
Okay, so, yeah, first of all, I just want to say this is working great on my end and everybody's clear as a bell. It sounds, um, fantastic and thank you for making this an option. Um, I, I think this is probably a moot point at, at this point about the masking petition because it sounds like nobody's thinking about, um, lifting a mask mandate or, or reinstating exemptions. But Mr. Mills asked that we sort of, um, organize it a bit better and get the signatures organized in, uh, by, by where they're coming from. And I just wanted to acknowledge that we did that and should have it in email and that there are two hundred and eleven signatures from Rappahannock residents organized by town. And that's all.
And can you state your name and district for the board?
Yeah, I'm Kristen Gregg and I'm in Potts District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get Ellen back?
We'll try Ellen again, come on, Ellen.
Last chance, Ellen.
Oh, she's unmuted. I don't know that your audio is connected, Ellen, I'm sorry.
All right, well, um, we gave it the old college trial, right?
College trial.
So, are there, is there anyone else that would like to address the board this evening? Anybody here? Last chance. All right, uh, moving on to, uh, new business. Uh, one thing I would like to mention is, uh, there is, uh, money that we had, uh, discussed, uh, uh, setting aside towards broadband, uh, that was flowing through the school system. And at this point, do you want to speak to, uh, to that letter or what our intent would be with a letter?
So, uh, last, last meeting, we did approve that S R three plan, uh, in which we did allocate, uh, certain funding streams to help improve broadband or access for our families. Um, so that's in the plan already. When I met with Mr. Curry at one of our monthly meetings, it was brought up that it might be a good idea to send a letter of support from the school board and the school, just saying that this is a commitment of our CPS up to this amount, which was in the S R plan, just to have it more straightforward. Um, so I thought, bring that up.
And, and I see heads nodding all around the room. So, uh, we will construct a letter and send it over to Ms. Curry and it'll be, uh, from the board, with, uh, signatures from Dr. Grimsley and myself. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Need a motion for that or just consensus?
Just a consensus, because you've already voted on it in the plan.
It's in our plan, this is just to affirm.
Yeah.
With them that that's our, our intent. Also, I was wanting to remind people that there is a candidate forum on Saturday here in this room from six to nine, correct? Six to nine, and, uh, and I think the school board candidates are going first, so don't be late.
We're not sure.
I think that's what I heard, so anyway, uh, we should be going first, right? Anyway. Uh, so just wanted to remind folks of that. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention was we had discussed a, uh, potential resolution. Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Rubin?
Yes, sir, I'd like to see, um, the school board consider and, well, like I said, the school would pass a resolution and memorandum of what at the time was Sergeant Says, who served our students here. Uh, I know many graduates have expressed to me and to others at the department, the impact he had on their life. The way he motivated them, many teachers, yeah. There was, no one wanted to see him move over to criminal investigations, they wanted to keep him here. Uh, he did pass unfortunately in the line of duty. Um, it was COVID related, but it was, it's something that was contracted while at work. He had a very lasting impact on the community, he had a very lasting impact on students and teachers here. And a memorandum resolution, um, expressing that gratitude, I think would be appropriate.
And so the, what would have, we'd put that together, uh, and basically vote and, uh, sign that next month at our monthly meeting. That's all right with everyone?
Now, we can, we can invite certain people too. We could invite certain people to come and.
As long as, as long as it, as we're all in agreement, then yeah, I'll reach out to the family.
Yes.
And we'll see if they would like to attend, if not, then.
That'll be our plan.
We'll find other meetings.
I'd like to make a motion that we create a resolution in his honor and, uh, present it to family next month if possible.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rubin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's ordered, thank you very much. And so we'll get that drafted and, uh, have it ready for the November meeting. Is there any other new business this evening? Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting will be on November ninth, uh, at this very same location, six thirty P M. Uh, at this time, we'll be moving into closed session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Will the board convene into closed session for the following purposes, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for classification positions, classified positions, dismissal of classified position, resignation of professional position, and discussion of superintendent goals pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A one.
Yeah, motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rubin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no, it's ordered. So we will be moving from this room into an adjacent room and we'll be back in, uh, fifteen minutes and, uh, and, uh, if you want to hang out, uh, we'll conclude the meeting at that time.
Okay, for those of you on Zoom, I'm going to stop share and stop the feed for now and then we'll come back in to open session. I'll reopen the meeting if there's anyone left. You'll hear the board certify and pretty much nothing else after that. So, uh, hang on if you wish, or otherwise you can log in again.